The last time I met this Miss Bird, she called in when we drove her house. He gave me some blue dance. She knew I liked blue dance. Somebody give us some blue dance. She called in and went to over and did it. And something come up, I don't hear now what it was about the students. And she said, "I don't know the eye. They can't be happy just to leave James alone." She said, "I don't even like to bring anything up to talk about it. Just leave him alone." The other thing that I want to share with this group is, it's about a week ago, Bobby South's not here today. He's like leaving for church right now. You know, Rita wanted to call and get her, but he's not able to do it. He got sick about a little over a week ago. And he called me and he was off. That can look over here where I'm new. He called me and said, "Want me to come get you?" I'm not a member of his church or anything like that. He's just a friend. I went to him, said, "I'm sick. I'm in trouble. I'm hurting. And I'm sweating all over. I want you to come get me." Why he called me? I don't know. I just called him. Called me and I'm on the way. Anyway, I went, I got him, carried him. Wanted to go to Houston, Memphis Hospital. Carried him out here. It would have been an airplane, flew into Houston-Hoggin. We called cab. And then when we had a man in cab says, was a Hispanic guy. He said, "Where y'all from?" I said, "Jasper." So I swear they having all the trouble that we've been through. Okay? Well, lo and behold, he give us a car. He said, "Y'all get ready, go back over there, call me. If I'm still in there, I'll carry you back." So lo and behold, we called that number when we got ready to go. And he showed up in the same cab that I saw. And he come and took the sub, carries back over there. I left Bobby there in the hospital. The man said, "You know what? I will never ever forget when they dragged that man to death up at Jasper, his mother." He said, "In fact, a lot of times when I'm mad or something, it's gonna do something I shouldn't do." I'll tell you a fact about her character and the way she handled herself. So there you have your tale of the Jane Bird tragedy. Jasper's known as the dragging death Jane Bird Jew. Jasper's also known as Mama Bird. The way she carried herself, the way she... So many people looks at, "I can't, I could, my goodness, be as good as that woman." That cab driving, driving to Jasper, you should remember. So as he says, it should be remembered good on that.
You know, I think the thing about the Bird tragedy that we all take on pride is not only the Bird family, but as I said to Pastor South earlier, when Harlan and I, when we talked yesterday, you know, it was kind of interesting dynamic because when Reverend Jackson came to Jasper, Harlan was driving. He brought him because he wanted to make sure that people who come outside don't come in bringing judgment on our town. And we were confident in the leadership of Jasper because people like Joe Tonnagill, Frank Lindsey Jr., Reverend Bobby Hudson, Reverend Harden, and so many others were coming together and saying, "This is what's gonna happen." Because Guy James Gray and others in our community, and the leaders in our community, made decisions like Mike mentioned ago, to tell the story just like it was, not to sugarcoat it regardless of who didn't like it. So when Billy Rose called the FBI in because he saw how bad it was, it brought a level of trust when I went in the whole community. And when Joe Tonnagill, you know, really talked to the black community and said, "We're gonna make sure that this case is justice. And we're gonna work everything in our power to make sure that happens." And they worked close with us in the community. There was a level of trust. When the Ministers Alliance got together and said, "We're gonna have a prayer vigil." It was both black and white. And we came together and prayed together. And there was no hidden agendas. You know, there was nobody trying to be a big I's and no U's. Everybody prayed together and worked together. And of course, we always have to remember what the Bird family did because they suffered the loss of their son. And of course, we all were behind them and helped all we could to make sure they had less guilt so. So what Rita, when we talked about this town hall meeting, and we haven't really officially began because we don't start until 3 o'clock. And I'm gonna be real honest because I can say things that some people can't say. You know, because I got to a certain age that I can just say, well, just to give an example. You know, this is private property. And we invited you here for a town hall meeting. And a town hall meeting is among us. So when people come in, they put a camera up and start videotaping and recording. Now, if I went in somebody's house and it was private property, the first thing I would do would come in and say, "Is it okay if I set this up and videotape and record you?"
That's right.
Or, "Do you have any problem with that? Or why are you doing it? What's the motivation behind it?
Yeah.
Or are you doing it to make our community positive? Or are you gonna put a spin on that story so it'll look good to you?" So those are the issues that we want to talk about today honestly and forthrightly because when people outside come in and look at us, then I'm gonna take your word for it just because you said it. They're gonna do some in-depth investigation like they did during the Bird tragedy. And when they did the Bird tragedy, because they saw what we were doing. They saw the black and whites walking down the streets, talking.
That's right.
They saw us together loving.
That's right.
They saw us eating together. I mean, man, we were just having a good time. I mean, and those that drank Crown Royal together, they were doing their Crown Royal so much, man, that you know, I kind of want to take you some, but I couldn't. But so, all I'm saying again is that it's different now. And the reason why it's different now is because we got different dynamics that are happening in our community. So what do we do? Rita, you know, who's always been a strong leader from Houston and here and all, if we, we know we want jobs in our community. We know we want to be able to attract businesses and create jobs because when people got a good job and a good paycheck, you know, they get along a lot better. A good job, a good paycheck, and pay that house note, mortgage, and don't have to come to me and Mike's and pay their life payment, you know, they do better. So what we wanted to do today is really talk about how we can build the right image and not let a few people who really, like I said earlier, well, just like they were during the Bird tragedy, they wanted to come in and tear our community apart. And they wanted to split it up on black and white. And you know, don't be afraid to talk about black and white. Don't be afraid to talk about the reality of the difference. You know, because we have to understand that there's differences in our culture, in our history, in our background. You know, I mentioned about the culture of the black church and the culture of the white church. That's different. You know, probably believe, you know, we do things a little different and there's not anything wrong with that. But the fact that we have, what we have to do is that Jasper Texas has a large minority and non-minority. We got a lot of black people, a lot of white people. And the only way we're gonna go forward is that we admit the fact that we do have some issues that we can come together and work out.
That's right.
Because this is a good community. Now, you know, Mr. Newman sitting there, and Mr. Newman knows from our, anytime Mr. walk in and he needs something, he need a deputy, he needs a gun, he needs something, he just need, he just need it. And he comes in, boy, and he has a way of making sure he knows, "Man, I gotta have this because I'm trying to protect the African camp." And not only does he does it in a way to make you understand that he's serious about his job, but he doesn't care who he is. He doesn't care if it's black or white, Hispanic or whatever. He just doesn't care what it is. He wants to get it done.
That's right.
And I have to say this about Harlan, y'all. Now, Harlan, that is then, you know, I think he get more hugs from black folks than he does white folks. I have to give you a...
I'll testify.
You testify to him? Now, I don't, I'm not jealous with him about it because I hug a lot of white folks too, you know, but most of them real old.
At the last time I had to pack up my neck hug, you told me you can't hug that black girl.
I see him. I'm gonna stick him up in the same seat. I let them see all of them. I'm like, "What you doing here? They oughta hug that little bird."
That was your sister. Wasn't that your sister?
Brother. He up, he up. My sister, my brother-in-law.
Oh, but the brother-in-law was looking at him?
No, I was looking at him hugging my brother-in-law like that.
Oh, okay, alright.
You know, that's brother, that's brother love.
But Harlan, we go ahead and Rita, and try to get started officially so we can introduce your guests. And then we don't have Reverend Harden do the regular invitation when we get started. And are you ready to do it now?
I'm ready whenever you say. Are you ready? Maybe by a head. Maybe we all standing. Our boss and our daughter think that we can live. Everybody said we oughta hold hand. Let's show Jasper and don't criticize none of them. We can do it. Done it before. Just to have to sit up by his hand. Everybody, get Brother Lewis's hand back. He need it. Catch his hand. We all need it. Catch his hand back there. Ain't nobody got, let him feel that spirit. Come on up, Brother Lewis. I'm gonna have to take this. Come on up.
Take that, take that hand back there.
Come on up, Brother Stuart. Come on up. Come on, Sister Foster. Get with it all. We all here together. Let's show. Somebody take a little while regarding them. They got their balance. By a head. Now, far enough to thank you for another day. And we think that if we can live in a country or if we can come, contribute together, seek to work out our problems. Nobody got the answer, but if we all work together, a little bit of prayer, get the answer. You said your people would never be put to shame. And I wonder, Lord, why Lord, God would be the blacks that have to fight what we believe is right? And anybody with any common sense wanna be together, work together, love together in harmony and in love? Now, we thank Brother Nichols for just thinking up there and those that are working with him and these that who have come to share in what we said. And we believe that a spy in the bunch that wanna destroy Jasper and his council and his mayor and those that are what so entitled, that we might be able to live together, love together, care for each other like we've done before. Forefathers that have gone on before won't harmonize. We oughta want it ourselves. But the only way we can get is that we ourselves be a committee of one and say, "Let's be together." Or empower. And in unity, that is strength. I don't care what nobody... Unity, I said, y'all, that's strength. We oughta be together. We oughta be loving each other. We oughta be caring. And don't point no finger at nobody. You done made some mistakes like I have. Be with us, Lord, in what we do today. Let it be accepted into our sight. Come on, everybody. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. Amen. And amen. Just like that. Brown man. Reverend Harden.
Well, welcome everybody that's here to the Fellowship Hall of Heroes Church. Glad on this very, very short notice that you're able to come to this town hall meeting. I want to introduce to you the lady that called me about the town hall meeting. She's been president of a local union there in Houston for many, many years. She's very active in the community there, but she has a home and property, a family right here in Jasper. And every time I see her, she's going back and forth, back and forth, calling me. Enjoy your home there. Early this week, she called me and I came by her house there and Harlan came by. We just, don't say Harlan, I didn't get that coffee. But did you get a cup of coffee?
No, that's what I said. They said just call me. I never got it.
But, 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 so ahead and drink it all. Alright, well, next time we'll get that coffee from Harlan. But I am very glad that those of you who are here have come. And Rita has a wonderful way of trying to work close, bring people together. She's invited a very special guest to kind of help us moderate this. I'm glad to see that the media from Los Angeles time moved here. You know, normally, most people don't mind when people are writing a truth about who you are, what you are. This is a different age we live in now with the news media and with what we call all the virtual media that we get today. But I am so grateful and thankful today that we do have a free press and that really allows us to have freedom of press today. We want to make sure we continue to have it in our great nation, in our great country. At this time, will you join me in welcoming Rita Rawlitt with us? And just give her a good welcome for doing this today. Thank you.
Thank you, my fellow classmates, my family, my friends, past coworkers, classmates, for allowing me to come in and try to, ahead this program and try to get our community together. We need some jobs. Is that right, Dana? We need some jobs in Jasper. And we gonna have to get that job shot off in our head so people wanna come in here and bring some money in. I said I'm setting up the one earlier. I want to invite one of my friends that I work with, her in the state senate session. She just recently re-elected our state representative, District 131. And you can text her, Dr. Alma Allen, y'all. Keep my hand up. I talked to Alma Alltown about the situation that's going on in my hometown. Most of them, let's say that I work with, they know that I am passionate about Jasper. Even with Alma Green, they all know something's going on down here and that they gonna work with them to try to be tough, to be tough pregnant. But my main thing is, we need some jobs in Jasper. Get some jobs in Jasper and get Jasper back on, back on pace. You know, we sound like all that going out, chicken patch and all that kind of job like that. You know, and when you see now, if you work at that, you know, thanks to them, Burger King and Waller Burger and Jack and the Box, they make themselves eight dollar hour job. We need to bring some jobs in Jasper that gonna be at least three hours to ten dollar an hour. Now, get anything on that.
Anything.
Right. Alright, and we gonna, I'm gonna have Brother Allen come up and...
I'm glad for you to all be here. I know Rita for a long time. She's a little bit ahead of me. And I think you ready for it?
Two, one.
And me and Willie though, we graduated, yeah. So we're all classmates here. And she actually called in on the telephone. I was out of town. I didn't get a message. I was down in the country, living out of that. We called her. And she asked to be here and I'm proud to be here. And I want to tell you that I've heard over and over and over in this, and I'll make a very brief, the jobs. And I want you to know that anyone that knows me, that's one of the main reasons that I'm in the City Hall is jobs. The Jasper Economic Development Corporation, City of Jasper, working together to facilitate the recent opening of BioTerror Camp. They have about 14 employees. And they're building, they're making half of it here. We're hoping that our place can go. And also, I helped to facilitate the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, Raver Health Rehabilitation Center. That's about fifty-five good paid jobs we're working with him today more, because they had some problems with the city. Uh, I want you to know that something else that she hasn't mentioned, and I'm gonna make it very brief, I worked on Friday, and I will be working on the end Tuesday, and, and me and, and not myself, but something we have worked on, and we continue to work on is the electricity. And that has to do with the cost of getting electricity to Jasper, then it's turned into seven electricity dues. Well, Terry, as mayor, I ran because I was aware of the problems that we had here in Jasper economically, and that still gives me my main focus, thank you.
Give the mic on, Representative Dickles.
Uh, also, you know, one of the things we're doing before we start the forum with Representative Alma Allen, I want to have a words of expression from the president of Justice from Jasper. Uh, he's a pastor, actually the largest after-American church in this community. And that is Pastor Rachel Arzaloo, let's give him a hand.
Yeah.
I just want to say good evening.
Good evening. If you took an offer number right now, you'd get a big offer, I know that. But we're glad, uh, we're glad for all of those, uh, those leaders in our community who are here. And Rita mentioned the pillars of our community, and there are several who are here, pillars of our community that she's recognized in leadership. And, uh, and what Bernie was passing out is a brochure that was actually FedEx for me today from, uh, the Anti-Dedication League. A wonderful brochure, uh, and basically, if you read the front page of it there, Bernie, it basically says something that I think we all would love to hear, is if we could end hatred, imagine what more we could do. If we could end hatred, imagine what more we could do. And, and in this town hall meeting, uh, you know, life is, is kind of complicated, and sometimes it gets a little strange. How many, how many people here have been married? Let me see how many people have been married for a pretty time. All y'all been married? Okay, now, how many y'all haven't had an argument with your wife? Let's see, you hug, let me see your hand. No, okay. I didn't see anybody with Jimmy Gavin hand, that's open, I saw Jimmy. Okay, well, my wife is in the back, back there, and, uh, we've had some pretty tough discussions, we don't have no argument, we just discussed it. We discuss it, and then, uh, and in the end of it, at the end of it, Harlan, it's always the yes here and the no here. But really, seriously, today, uh, it is our prayer, and it's our hope today, that if we pray together and love together, and work and stood tall together for the Jane Burden tragedy, our community can come together and forgive and love and understand how strong we can be together.
Yeah.
Because we're much stronger together than we are apart. And I know that there's a lot of water that's going under the bridge, a lot of issues that we're not gonna talk about and discuss today. All we're gonna talk about is how we can heal, how we can move forward, how we can create an atmosphere that people wanna come here and create jobs, and build a community for our young people to come back and be able to get a good job. You know, uh, the past week, I had seven of my grandkids here with me, seven of them. They are from, uh, Beaumont, Houston, Luckton. And the thing about it was, is that I got so tired of them, I was just constantly tired because I lost all my energy and all. What I learned was is that they love coming to Jasper. They love going fishing at the park. They love the fireworks on Juneteenth. Reverend Lewis, they just love those fireworks, I mean, man, they just, they just, they just, they love it, and they enjoy it. And, uh, and they don't know anything about the controversy and the conflict. They don't know anything, all they know about is those things that we're gonna leave with them as a legacy in this community. And I think today is a good beginning for us to not only understand, uh, the significance of some of the issues that we've dealt with over the past several years, but how we as a community are the only one can handle the issues and come together with solutions, because that's what we do best. Is come together with solutions to build our community, because we got a good place to live, a good place to work, a great place to play. Uh, you know, if you like fishing, this is the place for you. And, uh, so, uh, I, I, I just wanted to say that before Alma come and start, uh, moderating this, uh, community, uh, town hall meeting today. Uh, Rita's gonna give you some instructions about how you can write down certain things you'd like to discuss today from the moderator, and we're gonna let you go real quick, because this is Sunday evening.
Saturday.
Saturday. I wonder why I got to suit town like that. It's the second day that we all.
That's right.
Yeah, and, uh, but, uh, but anyway, I do appreciate everybody being here. Take these things with you back home and bring them instead of sharing with your friends and relatives. We have a place that we're gonna be sharing around Jasper from the A D L, and just mention in it. Because there's nothing more destructive in anybody's life than having hate. You know, if we today understand the importance of love, and how much it builds, and how much it strengthens us. And I'm not talking about, uh, getting on, agreeing on everything, but making sure that those things that we disagree on, that we agree to disagree in a very, very civil, in a very, very positive way, that we can build our community. So, uh, thank you very much, and Rita, again, thank you for following me.
Thank you, alright, thank you. Um, I'd like to ask, uh, all the past pillars of the community that have been recognized in Jasper, you be standing. Y'all, y'all see, y'all see, y'all, y'all, we know this. Yeah, I think that it was very, it's a very real lead, and, 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 uh, and we take, we take our standard very positive, you know. And then, to nominate, to nominate nominated, and, you know, we go through the process, and we look at what you doing, what you doing in Jasper right now. Then we have, we have one that we, we screen has pillars. You know, I think we had such a Ziggy Spike one year, and, um, so this is, this is, this is brother man that he was trying, you know, he was trying to get. Can you do that? So, um, I'm gonna ask my friend, Dr. Allen, come up and give us a short, give us a, give us a little talking to, and then, once you get finished, we're gonna ask you, if you have a question, and one question directly to Dr. Allen, or Walter, myself, or Mike. Y'all just write your name on there, and then I'll give them a birthday, uh, with.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's good to be with you today. At the invitation of Rita. Rita called and said, would you come? And I had to wonder, is this yours, Rita? Yes, um, I wondered why she wanted me to come, and she said, come and facilitate. And I'm thinking, that's the only thing I need to do. It's a common facilitate, because I think you can handle what's going on in your community yourselves. And so, as an outsider, and I agree with those who say, we don't need outsiders to come in and tell us what to do in our community. And I don't wanna feel like an outsider, I've been here several times. Uh, I'm, I'm technically an outsider, but, uh, I don't wanna feel like an outsider today, so if you include me and the family today, I would appreciate it. Let me say that. What happens in, in Jasper and in the slouch of those people who live in Jasper? What is said about Jasper is spurred off of what is said about Jasper by the people who live in Jasper. I'm a longtime educator, and when I hear teachers talk about how bad schools are, my immediate focus goes to, well, what's wrong with you?
Yeah.
If a teacher is talking about how bad the schools are, my position is, how bad are you? Because you're supposed to be the person who makes the difference in what's happening in the school. So when you're talking about how bad children are, then you need to move on. Because you need someone that cares and who can make a difference for the community.
That's right.
Now, you always have the option of excluding the media when you have a media, if you so desire. But that's very, very difficult. Everybody in this room has a cell phone, and has a video camera on it. So nine times out of ten, you're gonna get in the media. And the media reflects most times, not likely, but most time, they get a story from negative. And so you know that's their position, right?
That's true.
The ideal position is to say nice, positive things. Now, it was just, I'm gonna say, three weeks ago, I saw the James Burden story on TV again. It will always be on TV, it's an interesting, historic effect, right? It is something we will have to live with until generations die out. And some things you will never get rid of. And so, what we have to be, maybe the community will never be the same as it was prior to the James Burden incident. We'll have to live within the way, the way the community is now. And the community is in our heart. I always feel comfortable when I come, I drove here by myself. This is the second time I've driven here by myself. I don't feel uncomfortable coming to Jasper, Texas. Thank my little grandson, if I know you were going to Jasper, I would've gone to Jasper with you. I have some friends in Jasper from Bellevue, he wanted to come. And so, as we look around today and think about what it is that we are trying to accomplish today as a people, as the people who live, work, and will live and work in this community, it is incumbent upon each of us to say, I am the person who is the intervention. I am the person who will make the difference. If you're talking negative, negative will just keep going.
That's right.
At some point, you have to stop, forgive, and forget. Let go, and let go.
Right.
That is simple saying. It's very hard to do. But you can always start with yourself. Let go, it's not something that I want to spread, am I right? Let go, and let go. And so, let's look at today as what, what it is we want to accomplish. I'm thinking that this meeting is about today. It's where do we go from here? James Burden, it's water under the bridge. Some people's heart will be there forever, if you're part of the family, you will never forget. And it will be passed down to the next generation. And if you live here, if you are a friend of James Burden, you will never forget. Most of us in this room will never forget. It was worldwide media. It was on everybody's lips.
Well.
It will be there for a long time. It is something you have to live with. Then we live in it graciously. That is what we have to do. We have to live with it graciously, starting with yourselves. Ask yourself a question. What can I use? For you, it's not for anybody else in the room.
That's right.
What can I use? What did I do? What did I do to keep the message going on? What did I do to stop the message?
Yeah.
What did I do to build a hatred? What do I do to stop the hatred? What can I do to make Jasper a better city, a better town, a better place to live? First, talk positive about Jasper. Jasper's a beautiful city.
That's right.
It's a beautiful ride here, it's a peaceful ride coming here. And the first time I came and I passed by the lake, and I said to Rita, this is a pretty little city. I'm gonna live here. And you got everything you need, you got Walmart, that's right, you got Walmart, you got grocery stores, you got jobs everywhere. It's a beautiful place to live. My, I finished high school right out of street, Livingston, Texas. That's where I went to high school, so I'm used to the South, I'm used to East Texas, I'm used to discrimination, I went to a segregated high school, Dunbar High School in Livingston, Texas. I'm used to all of that. But I go back every two years, and we talk about Livingston, and, you know, to us, it was a good time. We know the difference.
That's right.
When we drove by the white school, go down in the hole to the Dunbar school, we didn't know the difference. We were happy as we could be. Everybody had holes in their shoes.
Yeah.
Everybody was small in the height of their shoes. We didn't know we were poor, did we? We were happy as we could be. Now, when I look back home, and I say, Lord, how did I get through there? That's why I be saying, how I got over. You never know whether, but he can take you over and out of this situation.
That's right.
And so today, when I walked into the room, I said, what they're doing is the best thing they could do. They are talking it out. Everybody is. You got to talk about it. You have to purge yourself. If there is something you wanna say, this is the room to say it here.
That's right.
Not when you go down the street, not when you talk to somebody else who didn't come today, who won't have the benefit of the knowledge that you have today. And so, with that in mind, we will stop.